Counselors, meeting in order. This is the regular session of the American Council of the City of Bisbee County and Cochise from State of Arizona. Today on the weekdays at ten fourteen fifteen, two thousand and eighteen at seven P.M. In the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, fourteen fifteen. Melanie Lane Building Chief is the Arizona. Ms. Cornell, would you please go ahead?
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem D'Elsta?
Here.
Councilmember Abe Lindstrom?
Here.
City Staff Robert Smith, City Manager, Ashley Cornado, City Clerk. Carrie Bagley, Finance Director. Daniel Duchon, Sergeant Alvarez. Dwayne Wallace, Interim Operations Manager. Albert Chather, Police Chief. George Castillo, Fire Chief. Aldo Ardoño, City Attorney. Take a breath.
Thank you, Madam. We'll start this meeting off with a moment of silence. And our indication tonight is in memory of our mayor, Laverne Williams. The Huggin' Mayor, as most know, did pass last weekend. And there will be a remembrance of her life celebration at the high school, Bisbee High School, at one P.M. this Saturday. And the public is obviously very, very welcome. The family wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it was open to the public, and that's the very reason that it's at the high school. So if you'll join me for just a minute with a moment of silence in the Huggin' Mayor's memory. Would you please stand with me in the presence of the Senate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks so much. Has anybody had a chance to check their recordings and see how they look on YouTube? No? Okay. If you have an insomnia attack, you may wish to do so. You are, okay, well, I can't just point you down. All right. Under announcements, I do want to indicate that item number seven will be pulled from tonight's agenda. That's item number seven will not be on the agenda tonight. And that is through request of the two councilors who requested it be placed on the agenda. And with that, as the rest of my announcements, I'm going to ask our personnel director, Mr. Dan Duchon, to come on up, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we've got some great employees here at the City of Bisbee, and I think it's important we recognize them. Over the last several months, we've had some milestones and anniversaries, and I think it's important we take some time to say thank you. So I've got some words for some of our employees for reaching milestones in time in service, specifically five, ten, fifteen, and I think there's twenty there out there, maybe. So the mayor, come on forward, and I'll start calling some names. And if you guys are here, come on up, and we'll do a group picture again. Nine Williams, our deputy clerk, five years.
Wow.
Stephen Schlotman, our firefighter paramedics. Our next firefighter paramedic, well, senior, five years. Carrie Bagley, five years, our finance director.
How much did these cost?
Sarah Alvarez, with Public Works, five years. I don't think she could be here. Next, Miguel Tapia, with Public Works, five years. Also with Public Works, James Hummich, five years. Kevin Pacheco?
Thank you.
Ashley Cornado, our city clerk, five years. I don't know what to do about this.
You might want to kind of hang here because you want a group picture unless you want to go up in the back. There you go.
Michael Gastaloon, with Public Works, for five years. Dwayne Wallace, five years, Public Works. Those are our five years. Some of the specials we're hitting as the time grows here, all right? Fifteen years, Rochelle Davis.
You've got a whole bank of stuff here, Rochelle.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Fifteen years, Flavio Borone, with Public Works. Fifteen years, Alex Maranés, with Public Works, as well. I want to play catch-up with this one. Stephen Gardner, with the Police Department, twenty years, and this is about six, eight months ago, chief. We're a little behind, but we're there.
Yes.
So twenty years for Stephen Gardner. Last but not least, he's retiring in December. Twenty years for Public Works, Thomas Cole. If it'd be possible, everybody that was recognized, come on back up for a quick picture. We're here.
Just like I said, all of you are so bad.
He's right here.
I need a twenty year, or who else is twenty?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Just tell me. Who's fifteen?
Rochelle.
Rochelle?
Yeah.
You're going to stick here. Okay, no, you don't have the tenor. Stand right there. No? Yes, you are. Turn your shoulder. Turn your shoulder. Go this way. This way. You're on this way. Get that to the back.
Don't you give her a mic out.
I'm manhandling you. Sorry about that. Be hippies. Okay. Count three. Ready? One, two, three. Make sure everybody's got their eyes on the step. One, two, three. And one, just be sure. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We have called the public, and we've got one person signed up. That's Claire Shapen. Ms. Shapen, welcome.
I'm an old lady who'll have to wait for me.
You're fine. Do you need assistance up behind there?
Does it come down?
Yes, ma'am. Just bend her down. There you go.
I'm Claire Katie, District Mayor, Council. I am totally disgusted by the egregious comments and actions on the audio of the ad hoc committee dated July twenty fourth. Just a few highlights. Number one, there was no wall call, so you didn't know really who was speaking unless you recognized their voice. Carrie Bill Stipson was nominated for chair, yet she was overtalked by the men throughout the audio. She was very pro-community, and I give that to her. The mayor, when talking about lying to Spitmau, exclusive of Safeway, said the Chinese restaurant only took cash because they were laundering money. When asked if the council knew they were trying to bid on this, the mayor said no, and he didn't want them to know this, and they were in executive session. There is no executive session for committees. I am also checking this out with lawyers to make sure that I know what I'm talking about. I think he forgot where he was and that this was being audiotaped. Lastly, the CM said, "The community is a village." I don't find this quite admirable. They were hiding many things, and I employed the community to listen to this audio, where they will find many other secreties which show a total lack of transparency to the community and the quote-unquote "behind-the-doors" discussions. I am also putting a petition to the mayor and city council. There is no transparency. The action desired, I would like opening up more meetings to community to give hearing book.
Thank you, Madam. Ms. Cornell, Ms. Corvallis, could you help with transferring the petition? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam. Moving on to accounts payable.
I move to pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Do we have discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On page one, we have for parks, there's crane services, what do you think of crane services?
Crane?
Crane.
Oh.
It's not very much, but...
Was it for the flag? No.
I believe that crane service was for setting a new statute that Mr. Wick donated for graphic mark. Sound post crane usually takes a little bit, and that was done three or four months ago. It just couldn't have been for us to get to bill for it.
And then another question on page thirteen. There's a message for rental for over a thousand dollars for over fifteen hundred that goes back to July.
I believe that is the last payment on the message board that it seems likely I have to answer for the Bisbee Road project that the previous Public Works Director ordered.
Okay, so it's for the same project?
The same, same, yes. That's, they don't, they bill per usage. It's not one single bill. It's billed, you know, for a couple, I did sign up for the, for the actual terms of it, so I don't know if it's two weeks or three weeks, but this should be the final billing line.
Thank you.
Another question on page eleven. Half-page ad for twenty-seven dollars. Is it a bad idea?
It says there's some official travel guide to greater Phoenix, half-page ad and part of AOT Co-op. It's AOT Co-op partner, City of Bisbee, so. It has some official travel guides in greater Phoenix.
Is that really Bisbee? Your second question?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a magazine here.
It just says travel guide, so I don't know. That would be a question for Jennifer.
Anything else, Council? Thank you, Madam. We have a motion, we have a second. It was intended, signed by the State of I. Oppose, signed as I. Three, none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is the Consent Agenda. I have taken E. Approval of the appointment of Kathy Wright in the Silver Service Division. B, approval of a park facility a right-of-use permit for use of Grassy Park for the side pony village and beer garden on Saturday, November tenth, two thousand and eighteen from seven A.M. to eight P.M. Disincluding seven. I'm sorry, write it down. C, approval of a park facility a right-of-use permit for Brax for the use of Tombstone Canyon and Main Street at the Iron Man Down Grassy Park, then on the Subway Street to hold an art car parade on Saturday, October twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen from four P.M. to four-thirty P.M., and with Subway Street closure from four P.M. to six P.M. D, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Central School Project for an event to be held at Grassy Park located in thirty-nine Copper Queen Plaza, Bisbee, Arizona, on Saturday, November tenth, two thousand and eighteen from ten A.M. to six P.M. Laura McKenna, applicant. E, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by St. Patrick's Church for an event to be held at St. Patrick's Church Hall located on one hundred Quality Hill, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, October fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and on Saturday, October sixth, two thousand and eighteen from eleven A.M. to nine P.M. Maria Pitslin, applicant. Any member of the Council who should be in this call for discussion? Write it down. I have another motion.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda items A and D. My second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornell, you can go ahead.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four, special approval of the non-exclusive revocable license agreement between Freeport Minerals Corporation and the City of Bisbee to construct an above-ground stormwater detention facility on Freeport property. Mr. Wallace, in your own operations management.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we were supposed to start the Kent Town project around two months ago, and the week before, K E G was supposed to break ground, Freeport informed us that there was no agreement to actually put the retention basin on their property. So with a lot of hard work with, from our attorney, Elba, and Ernie Wright from Freeport, and our risk management, they've been working on it, and we present to you the agreement to, so we can actually use the property to build the stormwater retention basin where it was designed to go. This has been vetted completely by our attorneys, and their attorneys in our risk pool, and everything, there's this back and forth of changes, and we recommend approval.
Thanks, sir. I do want to, again, I want to thank our attorneys for their diligence on this and getting it through, as well as, I'd like to thank Freeport, their legal department in Phoenix, making things happen much more quickly than normal.
Yes.
And so they've been a good partner to us in this. So do we have any, any questions, Mr. Wallace?
This is in Kent Town, is that correct?
Yes.
When do we think we'll go ahead and start this?
We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with K E G and S E O, and the engineer about this, and on the Phase Two, which we should be receiving, I think, the six hundred thousand for Phase Two, that I was told by Larry from K E G, don't worry, we'll get it done. And they said they can get it done in three weeks, but we have to look around first on this section side. So I feel pretty confident that they'll move pretty quickly on our boards.
So we're talking about by first of next week, we're going to be at starting here. Any other questions, Council? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the non-exclusive revocable license agreement between Freeport Minerals Corporation and the City of Bisbee to construct an above-ground stormwater detention facility on Freeport property.
My second, ma'am. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornell?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four, special approval of the non-exclusive revocable license agreement between Freeport Minerals Corporation and the City of Bisbee to construct an above-ground stormwater detention facility on Freeport property. My second, ma'am. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornell?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four, special approval of the non-exclusive revocable license agreement between Freeport Minerals Corporation and the City of Bisbee to construct an above-ground stormwater detention facility on Freeport property. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the Streets Division, they had an old striper that broke a couple years ago, so they took a house striper and made a streets striper out of a house striper, and now the house striper broke. So it is, we need a new striper. We did go out to bid and put out an RFP. The only responding to that RFP was Sherman Williams out of Sierra Business, so this is as local as we can get for this. So we do recommend approval on this as well.
Thank you. Do we have questions, Council?
I guess, is there, like, any strapping that needs to be done?
Yes, we, and that's when it broke. We completely did fog ceiling in Bakersville, in Saginaw, and paving on Hyrum, and we have nothing to strip with. And in fact, it broke down right before school, so we had to get the county to come in at our expense to strip all the crosswalks for the schools that we don't want to do.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
What is striking?
I'm not sure. I'll handle it. The amount of stripping that we need, that's, the cost of this, will pay for some quite quickly. I can give the numbers for you, and mail them to you the next day or two.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a line laser striper, one thirty HS two gun, in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents, not including tax, from Sherman Williams. The City of Bisbee completely, RFQ is, Sherman Williams is the only company that did this one.
My second, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Allohs in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Oppose, sign as I. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Item number six, special approval of the possible approval of Resolution R eighteen sixteen, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and ordering the recordage, recordation of the resolution. Ms. Cornell?
Could you, Mayor and Council, is the resolution adopting the results presented to invite the Cochise County Elections Department for the primary election that was held on August twenty-eighth? If approved tonight, we'll record it, and it will become an evergreen.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Cornell? Here and then, do we have any questions?
I move to approve Resolution R there's eighteen, there's sixteen, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and ordering the recordation of the resolution.
My second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Corvallis?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval to dissolve the City Hall building in the ad hoc committee. I have asked for this to be put on the committee consensus by people. And we have one that has indicated that he wishes to resign because he will be potentially bidding on the bid package. We have another one that is believed to be going to bid on the bid package and will be therefore resigning. And with the RFQ, RFP that the council authorized going out, looking at the building site at one-one-eight Arizona Street, there's no need for the further use of this particular committee. So therefore, I'm asking that the ad hoc may be dissolved. Questions?
I move to approve the...
I guess, nothing set in stone yet with the City Hall, correct? There's still a lot of planning to do, correct?
The purpose of the, that is correct. The purpose of the committee was to attempt to come up with where the best location would be, yes.
So there's still a lot of planning in the future, correct?
The building itself, yes. But that wasn't the function of the building committee. But yes, sir.
So on the twenty-fourth meeting until the thirtieth meeting, was there a discussion about what was going to take place?
On the twenty-fourth meeting?
There was a meeting on the twenty-fourth, the ad hoc, and then the next meeting talking about a plan was on the thirtieth, right? So was there a meeting on the twenty-fourth of July and the thirtieth of August with the ad hoc committee?
filed on August 28th, 2018, and ordering the recordage, recordation of the resolution. Ms. Cornell.
Good evening, mayor and council. Is the resolution adopting the results presented to invite the Cochise County Elections Department for the primary election that was held on August 28th? Um, if approved tonight, we'll record it and it will become part of our...
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Cornell? Here and then, do we have any motion?
I move to approve resolution R-1816. Declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 28th, 2018, and ordering the recordation of the resolution.
My second.
Here we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornell.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number eight. Discussion of possible approval to dissolve the city hall building at the ADHOP committee. Um, I have asked for this to be put on a committee consisted by a few members. And, um, we have one that, um, has indicated that he wishes to resign because he will be potentially bidding on the bid package. We have another one that is believed to be going to bid on the bid package and will be therefore resigning. And with the, um, RFQ, RFP that the council authorized going out, looking at the building site at 118 Arizona Street, uh, there's no need for the, uh, further use of this particular committee. So therefore, I'm asking that it, uh, the ADHOP may be dissolved. Questions?
I move to approve the... I guess, nothing set in stone yet with the city hall, correct? There's still a lot of planning to do, correct?
The, the purpose of the, that, that is correct. The purpose of the committee was to attempt to come up with where the best location would be, yes.
So there's still a lot of planning in the future, correct?
The building itself, yes. But that wasn't the function of the building committee. But yes, sir.
So, on the 24th meeting until the 30th meeting, was there a discussion about what was going to take place?
On the 24th meeting?
There was a meeting on the 24th, the ADHOP, and then the next meeting talking about what a plan was on the 30th, okay? So was there a meeting on the 24th of July and the 30th of August with the ADHOP committee?
I guess I don't, probably.
Because the plans were made from the 30th, staying there and going back to city hall, but it was never discussed with the ADHOP committee.
Okay.
So when was it discussed with the ADHOP committee about the, the new plan?
As I had indicated, the overwhelming majority was that we would be going back to city hall. This came...
Pardon me? Where was that?
I received two telephone calls from two members indicating that that's what they, there's, that was Mr. Stern, that was, uh, Ms. Gusterson. Uh, Chuck was, uh, gone, uh, in Maine, I believe. And...
There was no meeting?
No, certainly no meeting. That is correct. It would have been noticed.
So that, that doesn't make sense to me. We had, we made these plans in the July 24th meeting, which had nothing to do with the city hall meeting. You listened to the audio. And then all of a sudden, on the 30th, we're going back to city hall, but there was no meeting with the ADHOP committee. And now we're just banning the committee. So why not just replace the members and continue with the committee?
That's fine. That's what you wish to do. I, I, that's fine. I have no issue with that. Do you have suggestions?
Replace the committee?
Yes.
That is the very wrong idea?
Yeah, I assume it does.
It sounds like that.
Okay, very.
So your motion is, uh, and will we replace the ADHOP committee and keep it going?
Then, I think I may be wrong, Ms. Orville, but it should be a motion, uh, be to, uh, not approve to dissolve the city, so that is the agenda item.
That's the agenda item, so you'll need to, um, first vote, um, to not approve what's going to pull out the agenda. If you, what I would recommend is if you want this committee to continue, uh, you'll need to decide what their role is going to be. Because when you first voted to establish this committee, their role was to decide, um, and present to council what options the council had with regard to city hall. You know, whether it was going to be rebuilt, whether you're going to purchase a different property. So, um, if there's already an RFQ out, or I'm sorry, an RFP out to build where the old location is, I, I think you're going to have to redefine what this committee is going to do.
That was my point.
So, so if you decide you want to do that, you probably want to bring that on a different agenda. Because we did not, we did not notify anybody that we're going to vote to change the scope of the committee or to, um, vote any new members or anything like that.
I guess I just, I don't recall the committee doing that, getting their suggestions in meetings. The last suggestion is, if you look at the July 24th meeting, they laid it out very clearly. And that has nothing to do with what we did on the 30th. So all I'm saying is there's a, there's a gap between the 24th and the 30th with the ADHOP committee and what they wanted to do. So I guess I'm just confused.
Mayor, I have a question, not for Mr. Daniel. So, the way this is, we would have to absolve or disband whatever, um, this committee. But should councilman Lindstrom or anybody else want a committee to maybe continue with how we're going to proceed or what the next steps are, then we need to come up with a, a new committee?
No, not necessarily. You can all vote to not dissolve the committee. You're either going to vote tonight to dissolve the committee or not dissolve it. So if you decide we don't want to dissolve the committee, then the committee will stay intact. What I'm suggesting is if it does stay intact, then later on you'll need to come back and, and address what you want the committee to actually do.
So then, a question for the mayor. You're saying that there are at least two members that have asked, "Okay, but we don't have any supporting documents as to who they are and why, and how many would be left on the committee?"
Right, I'm telling you, at this point, it'd be, at this point, it'd be three left on the committee, is my understanding. This is, uh, I have one in email and one verbal. But, um, I, that's why I thought that this would be a lot easier to solve the committee than go through resignations, et cetera, et cetera. But that's what people want and that's what, uh, what they can get.
I think it probably would have been helpful for us to have the documentation because, um, I mean, I didn't have any clue that there were people who wished to resign. Like they do on other committees. We usually get a little letter or something.
But that, yes ma'am, but, and I'm not arguing, but that committee is continuing. This committee, I was asking that it be dissolved, so I'm dissolving it. No need to go through that because there is no committee. That was the difference. It was me trying to streamline things rather than make them more difficult. I move to approve the dissolution of the city hall building at ADHOP committee.
My second, ma'am.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. I move to adjourn.
Almost, almost.
Mr. City Manager, if you have any thoughts or thoughts.
I, I, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. I actually do have a couple of things I just want to put out there. I'm, Bill, I'm trying not to keep you too late. Um, the, we've, we've had a significant sewer spill at the border that's continuing. And I, it, we are interested in that as a city because it does affect, um, wells and the aquifer in that area if it's not managed properly. And I do want to thank the county publicly for the incredible work they did to contain that and to treat, um, and begin to deal with, um, that sewage. It, it is raw sewage, straight out of the pipe. It began on September 9th, about 680,000 gallons flowed into our area that day. Uh, over the course of the next, uh, several days, it has been about 300,000 to 400,000 gallons a day, um, that's been coming out of the system. About 3 million gallons so far. Uh, and the expected timeframe for repair of, of the system in Nacoa-Sonora will probably be within eight weeks. Their estimated total spillage to be somewhere around 8 billion gallons. Um, don't ask me how I know this, but that's about 27 Olympic-sized swimming pools. Um, just so that you know, we are communicating with the county and letting them know uh, what we're going through and the conversations that we've had with the IVWCC and the ABNE to keep them updated. And, uh, as things emerge, I'll, I'll provide reporting to you. They're still, uh, taking steps. The first step, of course, was to declare an emergency to get some attention and open some doors. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep you going as, as I learn more. Our financials for the second month of the year are out, and we're, uh, chugging along right to plan. Um, we're slightly up on revenues and slightly low on expenses, but, but we, we plan for operating that way. So far, things look pretty solid in terms of our projections. There's been a slight uptick in permitting and contracting activity. Um, there, there are people that are spending more money on their properties these days. Uh, short-term, uh, projections on items that are coming to council. Um, we are, uh, selecting applicants for interviewing, uh, for the public works director. Uh, we are soliciting for applications, uh, for an operations manager for public works. Um, there's a process that we go through, and I'm proud to say that Dwayne has solicited for that, uh, responded to that process. Um, we are, uh, working through, uh, the RFPs for operation at the wastewater treatment plant. And we will be bringing, uh, recommendations to you. Uh, hopefully within the next month, we're coming through and scoring, uh, those things right now. Um, and I would just like to again recognize the employees who have spent so many years with us and really value their continuation and their institutional knowledge. And with that, that would remain in my...
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Higgins?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
My second.
Uh, those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Please stand in charge.